Ahead and get started. There we go. We'll get started. This is our monthly Andover Board of Finance meeting for Wednesday, June twenty-sixth. It looks like, um, there's Kim. Hi, Kim. We will, um, have a quorum if we need to. We would be okay with that. We have heard that our chairperson Mark is away as well as Bill DeRozers won't be joining us tonight. Both of them were unable to make it. So we're gonna get started with the pledge. Cheryl, I'm gonna mute you for a minute. There we go. Alright. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, for God, individual liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um. First order of business would be public speak. So, um, I don't see too many members there, but I see Shannon Loudon. Shannon, would you like to participate?
No, thank you. I'm just here to listen in. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Um, and then I know that's Cheryl, and then we also have the Community Voice Channel with us tonight. So I don't see anyone else. I think we're all set with public speak. Uh, we'll move on to item three on our agenda, which is changes or additions to the agenda. I was gonna propose that we took Cheryl's portion, um, which is the charter revision auditor recommendations, which right now, if I'm allowed to do this, under five new business. Okay, and then move her up to, um, three A. We're gonna let, and hopefully I'm allowed to make a new notice with that there and we'll let Cheryl. Cheryl is here to present something to us that she wants to talk to us about as far as, um, transfers at the year end and, um, some information she wants to share with us. So do I have to, um, make a motion to see if I can add that? Thank you. I'm not good at the leading, but I'm getting there. Alright, would any, uh, would anyone like to make a motion so we can move Cheryl to item three A?
Sure, I'll move that we move Cheryl's portion of the proceedings to three A on the agenda.
Okay, that was Rob. Thank you, Rob, for making the motion. And Louise, you'd like to second it? Okay, and do we have to have any discussion on this, or do we just vote? Opening to discussion. I don't see anyone that wants to add any, so can we take a mo- a vote to move it? All those in favor say aye. So we have our five. Hi, Kim. There we go. We have five to nothing. So we will change Cheryl. We're gonna move you right up to next, which would be talking to us about the charter revision.
Great. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, lovely. Um. I had been, I knew that the board, uh, was, uh, looking to have potential changes to the charter. And we had talked before about all of the transfers that we would, um, do at the year end, July, August, once bills were in, where we were moving items between lines to make sure that lines were not overspent. Um, I reviewed the charter with Eric and Mike, our auditor. And he is advising, and I'm giving, and I had sent that off to, uh, Mark, and I think he provided it to the rest of the board, that as long as a department is not overspent, individual lines within the department can be overspent. So we should not need to any further make all the, you know, twenty-seven cent transfer here, a dollar sixty-seven cent here like we did last year. I will be coming forward, uh, within the next meeting with some department overages that will need to be addressed, and my suggestions on where to take the money. But they should be extremely limited now that we don't have to worry about each individual line within a department. That was one of the big things that I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of.
Cheryl, I do appreciate you bringing this forward, and I am glad. I know you sent us the backup from the auditor as well with him, um, saying that it, as long as it was at the department level. I think that's all that my concern would be is I still, and as you said, I would like to see the departments keeping their line items the way they are, but if, if it's, if they have the money in their own department and can, can overspend there without having to make all of those transfers and all the extra work for the department at the end of the year, I can see that being okay. The only department that I had some thoughts on today was the Public Works Department because it's so big. Um, but again, it's still in the department and we could look at the accounting of everything, so we're still gonna see it. I mean, that's my first line. Does anyone else have any thoughts on what Cheryl's proposing and sent to us? Or questions for Cheryl?
If I can, I would like to also add that, um, remember that if a department is aware that an expenditure that they're proposing is going to send a line over, they do have to get permission from Eric. So it's not like they just submit a bill to the treasurer's office and we automatically pay it. Um, if that department is aware that there's going to be an issue with a line, they have a requirement to see Eric, and then he either signs off on it or does not sign off on it. So there is that other level of, uh, review that it just, they can't just spend it. They feel like spend it because, oh, I have some money left in my department. It's not, not like that. They still have to have permission to overspend any specific line within their department.
Now, that's good information to know, too, that there's still the check or has to seek the permission from the town manager. Because you and him would have so much more knowledge of the whole total of the budget and other places that might go over. Um, so that's good to know as well, that there's always permission that has to be granted for that. I don't know how anyone, and Cheryl, will there be, is there another piece besides this? Um, I was glad to hear it seems. I just wanna, it seems like the auditor said that we won't need a charter revision because as it stands, we're still okay with the overages just in the department?
Well, I think there were other things that you were looking at for the charter revision other than just the budget. I think there was some bidding processes that you were looking at, no?
Right.
There are other items.
Oh, yes, understood. I mean, as far as for what you were bringing forward to us, yes, I know the Charter Revision Committee has other things going on and things that maybe the Board of Selectmen brought up and different things that they're trying to do, but as far as what you were talking to us about tonight.
Correct. Well, I, I have two items, um, that Eric requested that I bring before the board. Um, since he's on vacation, he asked me to at least, um, make the board aware of a, a couple of items that he has. Um, one of them is on his hot list and another one is just something that was passed by the state of Connecticut concerning the two percent lapsing fund for the school. Um, the state of Connecticut has now made it that the school can automatically fund their two percent lapsing without permission from, uh, the Board of Finance. There's no discussion. If the school has money um, left within their budgeted line, they can, their board can make the um, motion and vote to have X amount of dollars put into their two percent fund based on the new state statute without having to go before the board and request permission to deposit those monies. Just depositing. The funds still, as, as you guys, I know it's in your agendas today to talk about how they access those funds, but they have, under the new state law, um, the rights to fund that without any further discussion from the Board of Finance.
Okay, I think that was like included in our packet, um.
It should, yes.
Yes, as far as, yes, and I did take time to read that, too. And do you have any comments on the second part of that, the other one that was passed as far as, um, with, I know it had something to, the second part of it. Um, I think it had to do with, I didn't read the whole thing, but I thought it was. I thought there was one that was included that talked about capital expenses, but, um, I'll sit back on that because the piece of paper that I have is what you just spoke to.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing that Eric, if I can, wanted me to make the board aware of is that he has the need to go out for a potential RFP. There are three bathrooms at the school that are currently unusable. There's, um, they're not, they're not able to be used at all. He's already, um, talked to, uh, a company that potentially has the availability to do the work. They're estimating that the work would be about nineteen thousand dollars. Our bidding process says anything over fifteen thousand has to go out for RFP. And Eric is wanting to potentially bypass, um, the RFP requirement because he would like, if the company still has the availability, he would like to get those bathrooms um, corrected and fixed by the beginning of the school year. Now, currently there are three that are unusable. He figures it's gonna be about nineteen thousand. He felt the funding to come five thousand dollars potentially from the Board of Education budget and fifteen thousand, you know, rounded numbers, you know. Um, the remaining funds coming from, uh, the building maintenance fund, uh, within the town fund structure.
So is he saying, Cheryl, that that would come out of money that's left over from this current year since we're still in June?
N- n- no, 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 it wouldn't happen till the summer, but the building maintenance fund is a own separate fund.
Right, right.
Not flow with the budget year, so there are monies available there, um, that could be utilized towards the project. It would not have anything to do with the twenty-three, twenty-four budget that's ending this weekend, nor the twenty-four, twenty-five budget on the town side. It could potentially have some impact depending on how the funding finally plays out. Um, if the Board of Education is going to contribute to the potential fix of the bathrooms.
It's a big piece of information. There's always something that we learn last, last, clearly, we've been talking about these bathrooms in our other meetings, so it's so important. Um, you know, so I appreciate you bringing it forward. We, we have gotten no, so you're saying he found out that the cost would be nineteen thousand? That was some-
Roughly nine-
Roughly nineteen-
You know, on a quick look, roughly nineteen thousand. That would be between the engineer and then the architect. We have to have both.
Oh, this is the plan.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask because that's an order of magnitude cheaper than I was expecting, so.
Yeah, me too.
Engineering work.
This is the plan.
This is the, he wanted to bring in a firm to really get our arms around the problem, design a remedy, and then remedy costs, question mark. We don't know. We've set aside some money, but we don't know. Um, so we need nineteen thousand. I can't remember when we first talked about, I think he guesstimated like fifteen, and it turns out it's nineteen, uh, to do the engineering. Okay, okay. Um. So the idea here is we could maybe mix and match a little bit. Um, okay.
The issue is, though, is that if, whether we go out for an RFP or not, our, our charter says that anything over fifteen thousand dollars potentially has to go off RFP, which will take months. Whereas he would like to potentially get this done before school starts again at the end of August, beginning of September. That way, the students nor, um, the teachers are inconvenienced uh, with workmen being in the school trying to fix these three bathrooms.
I mean, this is just the engineering work. Who knows if, you know, depending on what comes back, but, um, I see his point.
Yeah, that's what my point, Amelia.
I can't fix it. I don't know. My, my daughter had a Zoom meeting. She logged in as her.
We're all someone different tonight. We all have a different.
Yeah, so let the record show that Amelia is Rob.
I'm just wondering if there's gonna be enough time to fix that in the summertime. Between, I mean, if you're just doing the architecture and then they have to come back and say what's wrong with it, then you have to get the plumbing.
I mean, I guess, I, I guess Eric's point would probably be if we don't get moving, then we certainly won't get it done.
Right.
You know, the only chance we've got is to get moving and, and, uh, you know, see what, see what happens. But yeah, I, I wonder, too.
Truthfully, there's always, you know, there's a lot of work that's gonna go on into the schools and I, like you said, it's getting, it's the first part of the project that they've talked about. Um, you know, it, it would be very nice to not ever have the workers around, but they, they will stay away and be around, be away from it, but I agree. I just wish that, you know, we had a full membership tonight because I know that other people would weigh in on the not doing the RFP. You know, Mark would have certain opinions and Bill would too, but I totally understand that we've been talking about the fix with the bathrooms. I think it's gonna be a big, their first thing with when they go for their capital improvement, you know, I think. So I, I have no problem with, you know, moving ahead if Eric is in favor of this and he thinks, go ahead. Rob, do you wanna say?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and, and see if I could ask Shannon, has this been brought before the Board of Ed? You, have you guys talked about this?
Yes, um, do you mind if I speak to it?
No, thank you. Thank you. I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up too, Shannon, so I really appreciate your input on this matter.
Yeah, we, we thoroughly discussed it at our June meeting, um, because Eric had, had asked for, um, input, and we got the letter that went to Eric from Aztec Engineers. Um, our big problem, and we have now asked that, um, other bidders come in, is twofold. Number one, Aztec Engineers has no idea how to do a school project. And there are very specific statutes that apply for doing construction in a school. Um, so the engineer from Aztec was very clear. He's, he does not have the capacity to do a, a school project, nor does he understand the statutory requirements. And then the second thing was, um, we had also had somebody on our board who does reviewing contracts for a living and thought that the nineteen thousand that was estimated was very high. Um, so we decided and we asked that, um, all three of our administrators go out to their specific networks to see if we could, number one, come in with different bids of people who have actually done school projects, and number two, come in lower than the nineteen thousand, um, that was in the, uh, letter that Eric received from Aztec Engineers. So my understanding was that, um, the Board of Ed is gonna consider it again and get those quotes. And number two, that the Board of Selectmen may itself address this, um, on July eighth. So not to put the Board of Finance in the middle, but, um, I think we don't have our meeting until the second week of July. Um, and that's where we are. Thanks for letting me have the input.
Shannon, that is so helpful, and that, that says it all, then.
I, I, I think we gotta wait. I mean.
Yeah, we, we cannot move forward with this. Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for being here, and, and that's the thing with rushing things through. I get it that Eric is really good at trying to be on top of his toes and get things in, but we would not know that. And we're, we'd be thinking we're doing a favor trying to rush it through, but it did sound a little high for the plan, too, but again, I'm so out of the loop with that kind of thing, so. I don't wanna, I appreciate Cheryl bringing it to the table and telling us because now we know it exists because this is our meeting and Cheryl was gonna be here. So that's great because we didn't get anything in any of our, and I understand, like, he's busy, he's doing a million things. So we know about it. I don't wanna put this on the table for any kind of vote or movement tonight.
Right. Well, we can, we can all have it in the back of our minds that, you know, hopefully the school gets some more bids, you know, maybe it's more like fifteen. And then we, we still have to have in the back of our minds, like, how are we gonna piece together fifteen-ish, uh, to get it done? Cause I mean, it's gotta get done. So that's, that's, that I think still remains the idea of, you know, do we kinda split it or whatever? But, um, yeah, I think we gotta wait for the other two boards to talk about it next month, and then our meeting will be towards the end of July, and we can take action then.
Perfect. Kinda, it's nice to rush it, but we also want it done right and, you know, the most economically with the plan, especially someone that has done school projects before. But is this, Rob, I was just wondering, oh, sorry, Louise, one second. I just wanted to ask Rob something about the RFP process. If we, start, with, with securing bids and everything, isn't that sort of the RFP going out to bid to get these things? So.
Right. I don't know how it works if we already have the bids in.
Right, if someone-
Then, then can you kind of reverse engineer the RFP to, to, I don't know. I, I'm not quite sure on that. I'd have to defer to.
So I'm gonna stay out of it and let it, let it progress however it does, and if someone brings something to the table, like you said, at our next meeting and asks us, then we'll talk about it then. Yeah.
Right. I mean, that, that's my take. Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just gonna get a glass of water.
Yeah, Louise, go ahead.
You have one other question. I'm just curious, um, the fifteen, well, the nineteen is for the administrative part of it and not the administrative, the architectural part of it. When it comes to the plumbing part of it, is the town gonna be involved in that, or is that going to be um, based on the school's budget to actually repair the bathrooms?
I think that it's been discussed. Oh, go ahead, Cheryl, if you wanted to.
I'm, I, I'm sorry. I wasn't sure. Was that question directed at me or to the Board of Education?
Whoever can answer that. I was gonna answer my little part of it, and then we could bring Shannon in, but I think obviously, I think we're gonna see if they designate this as a capital project, which it clearly is. We've been talking about it with the plumbing and the fixing of the bathrooms. And, you know, that's why it's a good idea when we do get that plan in place with how the approvals go. Um. Yeah, I mean, I think we had talked about that. You know, I don't think it was budgeted for in this year's budget or the regular town budget. But again, when there's emergencies and things that happen, that's why we're putting the plan in place so that we can understand how we go about these capital improvement things and what, what's designated as that. So the first part is the little plan, which will be the, the most inexpensive part about it with the engineering and the plans. Then we're gonna hear all about the end cost to actually do the plumbing and the work, and then the contractors and all of that, which could be significantly more. So that's my take. Cheryl, do you have any, anything to add? Or Shannon?
However, the funding is decided, that would be how the funding would be.
Right.
So I'll say three things real quickly. Um, number one, the Board of Ed may actually go out to RFP. Um, the estimate, just so everybody is aware, um, Eric had estimated, I don't know from where he got this information, but had estimated that the job only would take a month. Um, so if in fact that's the case, um, I don't want you to be concerned, uh, we have everything um, in our intention to get it done before the school year starts, because it has been an ongoing problem of which we've discussed a lot. So I think we have gone out with, um, I don't know if we've gone out to RFP, but I know that our superintendent, principal, and financial manager all were reaching out to their respective communities of networks um, to find an engineering firm that has done large plumbing projects in an elementary school. Um, and we're hoping that that will come back so that we not only have an engineering firm lined up, but also, uh, the plumbing um, perspective that, that, the plumbing firm that can actually do the work. So not only do we have an engineering firm that will give us the specs of, um, what Eric has described as an MEP, um, but also know what, uh, the possible, um, perspective is with regard to how much the plumbing um, issue itself might cost. Second is, um, you're gonna address it tonight, I hope, with regard to the tri-board, um, committee, um, the policy that, that the Board of Ed has passed, and the question there would be whether or not, um, I believe there's two hundred and three thousand or so in what's now deemed the AES Capital Fund. Um, the question would be whether it comes out of that, whether it comes out of anything from the town and anything from the Board of Ed, and I think that would have to be decided by the respective boards. Thanks. I don't mean to take up the Board of Finance's talking, but thanks for letting me talk.
We appreciate it. You have the information that we need, so we appreciate the perspective and, um, yeah. So Louise, that takes care of that. Um. So hearing the things, yep, hearing the things that Eric brought forward for us to know about, we appreciate that. Did we want to, um, approve what Cheryl, make a motion to what Cheryl first talked to us about as far as, um, the, the not necess- not needing to do every budget transfer, line item, budget transfer, you know, for the small things and just going with, um, if there's overages that can't be taken care of in the department. Um, I don't know if we wanna table that for the next meeting when Mark is here or if we wanted to take some action on it tonight. I'm open to either. And I don't know if that would put a hardship on what Cheryl's trying to do in the finance office as well.
If, if I can, um, Chris and I have been working on doing our estimate, our final payroll for the twenty-three, twenty-four year will happen on July fifth. The total accrual payroll that has to be brought back the twenty-three, twenty-four year, even though it's being paid in July. Um, we've already sent out all of the department notices that all, uh, bills that are applicable to twenty-three, twenty-four have to be submitted to the treasurer's office no later than August fifteenth. Unless, um, there's some dire, uh, reason that it does not happen and that they know that that's going to happen, then they need to notify the finance department, um, beforehand. So we can discuss it and bring it toward the board and decide how we want to handle it. Um, pretty much I said that anything that doesn't come in by August fifteenth will automatically go on the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So Chris and I will be working over the next couple of weeks, finalizing our numbers. Most of our bills should be in, we'll have our accruals, and I should be able to present to the board at their July meeting, my suggestions for any additional appropriations or line item transfers to take care of any departments that are overspent. So I, I'll be bringing something to the board in July.
Okay, that sounds great. Um. In my opinion, I don't feel like we have to take action tonight. Maybe we'll have a more full board in July, or does someone feel differently and wanna make the motion tonight? It sounds like it's not gonna hamper Cheryl and Chris with the work they're doing right now if we table it till then.
I agree with tabling.
Okay by me.
I agree as well.
Okay. Brian? Yeah, good. Alright, thanks. So Cheryl, if you don't mind, we will take action and most likely approve your suggestion, I'm sure. I mean, I don't wanna speak for everyone. You presented a good, um, rationale for why we would do that. Um, if that's okay with you, we're just gonna table our vote or motions on this to make it official in July.
Perfect. Yes, perfectly acceptable.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time and, um, relaying the extra messages. We always like to hear from you. Um, I'm just going to Yeah, I just wanted to look over the agenda real quick. Um.
Are you, anybody have any questions about the reports?
Yeah, thank you for asking that. While Cheryl's here, did anyone have any? I didn't specifically, Cheryl, not at this point, but open it up to any other members. I'm not seeing anything, so I think we're going to, um, be okay on that end. We appreciate you, um, including them and we won't need to have any further questions on that, so I think we're all set.
Okay, so would you, I'm okay to sign off then?
Yes, yes. I think we'll-
Thank you all. I hope you have a good rest of your evening.
Thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, we're gonna move on, um, to number four on our agenda, which is the old business, which is probably where we'll spend most of our time tonight discussing the, uh, review the policy for the AES capital expenditures. And I will move it over to Rob if you want to take over from this, you and Shannon, whichever one of you would like. Shannon, thank you for sending that email earlier today, whatever you'd like to discuss the Floragers.
Well, uh, I guess what I would say is, we presented a draft last time. Everybody kinda really didn't have any time to review it before our last meeting, so we didn't really dig into it in our last meeting. This meeting, you know, it's a little unfortunate because we're down two people.
I know.
Um, on, on the one hand, I wanna keep moving forward. On the other, I surely would value Mark and Bill's input. Um, so I, you know, I don't have a presentation here for people. I wanna see, I wanna hear if anybody else has thought of anything that they wanna add to this or, or issues they have with it and, you know, uh, see, get everybody, kinda take everybody's temperature on this thing. Uh, see, get everybody kind of take everybody's temperature on this thing.
Thanks, Rob. Um, I'm gonna open it up to a couple of questions to Shannon in a minute since she took. Time to be here tonight, which I really appreciate, because I know you two have been working hard on it. Um, just in review, I know Cheryl sent us it. I understand the need for the document and everything that we're going to do, and I think it's a good idea, and I think our town is moving forward, um, to have the agreement. Um, Shannon brought up a couple of things about the committee and the rules with the committee and making decisions and, and that kind of thing. I'm not as knowledgeable on everything that you have in. The agreement. I know the Board of Ed has already passed it, correct, Shannon? Yes. Um, you know, we're trying to bring members of the three boards together in a subcommittee of type, you know, or to be part of it, the decision-making and everything. Shannon, and I'm sorry to make you do this. Thank you, Rob, for yours. Could you give like just an overview to the members that took the time to be present tonight? And just like, not the whole thing, but why you felt it's, why you feel it's important to. Have the subcommittee and just a brief synopsis since you guys are more skilled at explaining it for us.
Just chime in if I, if I don't explain it correctly, but the bottom line is that, um. The town has graciously agreed to fund a capital fund, um, that hadn't previously existed. And I think all of it arose out of the, the issue that, that occurred last fall. Where we had tried to go forward with extra money left over in our budget to do a driveway project. And it was held up by the town. Um, and then the town insisted that because it was a capital project, it should fall under the auspices of the town. And we got into a kerfuffle and had our three board meeting, at which point it was decided that the Board of Finance and Board of Education should come up with a joint policy. And the basic reason that I think we need a tri board committee involving also the Board of Selectmen, um, is because. I don't want capital projects in the future to be held up, um, by either the town or the Board of Education, and I believe it's really important. Um, as we talked about last fall, that we all cooperate. Um, and. When it came to capital projects, as the expert, um, Attorney Mooney said, he's the expert on education law and all that kind of stuff in Connecticut. Um, there really does need to be cooperation. While the statutes say that, um, the building and the land are under the. Um, responsibility of the Board of Education, it can be kind of fuzzy and it needs cooperation when it comes to a capital project. So the basic thing is, I thought it would be important to involve all three boards. Um, to come together to decide upon capital projects for the Board of Education. And in that, I, I know it's a, a pain to have another subcommittee, but truly, I don't think this is going to occur very often, the need to actually, um, involve the committee. Um, right now, unfortunately, we do have three big projects that need to be done that could be deemed capital projects. Uh, one is the plumbing, we've already discussed. A second is the driveway project, and a third is the elevator in the school. Um, which, uh, we don't need to go into further detail, but bottom line needs parts and those parts are no longer going to be available, so we may need to look at. Replacing and or repairing the elevator, and that is something that, that might be deemed a capital project, or it might be deemed a repair project, however, uh, way the Board of Education decides to go. Um, as I said in my email, a really important thing to note is that, um, it really is not appropriate to have, um, like a threshold amount. Um, as the trigger for the tri board committee to get involved, because there are many, as you know, uh, Joanne, many expensive expenditures. Um, that the Board of Education authorizes that aren't necess- would not be deemed capital projects. So that's the need for the tri board committee. Um, it's very different than the first policy we came up with where. Uh, Robert and I were trying to define capital, which proved to be, um, very difficult. Um, and I think as Mark said at your last meeting, what's really important is to give the tri board committee, um, itself. The ability to really, uh, determine what's, what's a capital project. You know, the, the Board of Ed would say, we think this is a capital project, and then the tri board committee. Uh, it would trigger it, the, the tri board committee's involvement. Final thing I'll say, sorry, I'm going on. But we, we thought about, um, because there would be two members from each board, there would be six members of the tri board committee, and then the question comes. Uh, what if there's a tie vote? And what we determined at our last Board of Ed meeting before we, uh, approved of the policy was that if we had each board decide in itself. Um, what they believed would be the best, um, then we would at least have a, a two to one majority vote.
Right.
So in other words, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance and Board of Education, each within its own board would take a majority vote. And then at least we'd have two to one, if not three to zero, as far as, um, breaking the tie, and that's it. And I'll answer any questions, but that's the basic, uh, rudimentary.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And I mean, we talked about this extensively back and forth about, on the one hand, it's probably a little cumbersome. On the other hand. The, this way, no, none of the boards are being kind of shunted aside and, and you don't get a situation where everybody thinks we're good, and then at the eleventh hour. There's a holdup because, you know, say, if, if we had a policy just between the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance. And everything's ready to go and there's a permitting issue and Eric's talking to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen are saying, hey, I, I don't think this is going down right. And throw up a stop sign, what have we accomplished? Uh, if we have two members of the Board of Selectmen on this kind of oversight committee. For the, for the capital fund, they're liaising, hopefully liaising with their board. And hopefully we're now smoothing things so that when it comes to the individual boards' meetings and getting things done that way. You know, nobody's getting hit with huge surprises and hopefully. It'll grease the skids a little bit in terms of people making their peace with what the plan is. So that's, I, I, that's how I kind of came around on this. My first initial gut reaction was, oh, another, you know, another board, another committee, whatever. And, uh, it seemed cumbersome, but I think there's no way around it being a little bit cumbersome, at least at first, and. Uh, I think this is about as a good idea as any, and I like the new proposal for the, the tiebreaker, because that was something that when we first talked about it, I was real dubious. Uh, but this makes a lot of sense to me.
I agree. I really like the tiebreaker. That, that makes perfect sense. You know, each board would have one vote, meaning there's three total, and then, yeah, the two to one. Makes sense. You'll have to come to consensus on your board and cast your vote. Um, is there anyone else that, just real brief, I, I'm in favor. I mean, I, I understand that from the history and this is such a new process and such a new thing that we're proposing and. Like Shannon said at the beginning, hey, it's a great thing. We're gonna have a capital fund now, so no one can. Be opposed to that, but as far as processing it and how the money's gonna be spent and everything, there has to be an agreement. At least at the beginning, and hopefully the, all the boards will come together and there are, like we said, there's. Multiple things that already have to be done. It seems like the plumbing is at the top, um, because it's already getting talked about and. So I don't, I really, it just, it's good to have a refresh when you do so many things in life, just in general, and then work together once. So that refresh really brought me back, so. Um, I appreciate it, and I do like the idea of the little subcommittee, um, gonna open it up to board members. Um, I don't think. I hope this isn't gonna be, I wouldn't be in favor of passing it unless Rob thinks we should tonight, but I feel like going forward, we really have to take some action in July.
Yeah, I hope that our next meeting we would, but if not this, to- tonight, then, then.
Exactly, and it's only because of the members that aren't here.
Exactly, I really do want, I want to make sure Mark and Bill are comfortable.
So it's unfortunate, but.
Quick question, actually, before anybody else chimes in informational. Shannon, one more question for you. The policy that you guys passed. Was it redrafted to comport with your email that you sent us, uh, about with, with the tiebreaker stuff and everything, or does, is, there's a need to be an update? The actual policy.
I, I believe. I believe that the, I forwarded the policy to Mark, and I don't know if he then shared it with you, but it comports with how I've described things.
Okay, he's not attached to this email, so I'll.
No, 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 no. I thought you had previously seen it. Um, if not, I can forward it to you what the Board of Ed had passed. I'm sorry, I thought it got forwarded.
Last time we had seen a policy, it had the old tiebreaker, A, B options in there. So that would be by one thing also, we can't really take action. Uh, if we don't have the final draft or this, the final version. So, I mean, it all kind of comes together that we really ought to. Go, you know, come to our next meeting prepared, hopefully to take action. Uh, so if you can get us the final, the one that the Board of Ed passed, hopefully that's been fully updated, then great, Shannon, that's, that's helpful. Um, and I'll shut up now. Anybody else kind of chime in and ask their questions and, and whatnot?
I'm really sorry. I thought that that had been provided to you, so you had everything in front of you. Um, I thought I provided that to Mark, but I'll check my emails and certainly.
Mark may be out of the country, Shannon. I forget where he was going.
Yeah, no, the, from his Facebook post, he definitely is out of the country. Um, or he has been out of the country. I don't know when he returns. Um, and, and he and Bill were the ones who asked a lot of questions last time, so I absolutely appreciate, um, that you wouldn't want to take action tonight. But I will take a look and I'll get the policy as passed by the Board of Ed to all of you as soon as possible. Thanks.
Shannon, thank you, and we don't blame you for us not having received it, you know, with it. Yeah, no problem at all, like. Don't worry about that. Um, if you ever in the future wanted to send, whoever you wanted to send it to is fine, that's your prerogative, but if you wanted to send it to me. As well as the vice chair, and then I know that Mark's not available or hasn't sent it out, you know, I'll defer to him, but then I'm happy to share it with the rest of the board. As well, so that everybody has the time, but for this next meeting, I'm gonna make, I hope, I'm going to ask. Or send an email to all of the members, so hopefully we can, you know, all be there for that meeting. I mean, I understand vacations come up and different things, but, um. Yeah, it'd be nice to take some action in July, so we appreciate that.
I'll send the policy to everybody as soon as, um, the meeting is done or maybe during the meeting. Thanks.
You, that's great. Then we can refresh and now we have the new info on it, which I'm in agreement, like Rob said, I love that. Um, so. And so I'll just open it while you're here, and I know we'll probably, does anyone have any further questions too? Sorry. Or are we all?
I don't have a question, but I, I like the, the concept, and I think it might bring everybody together. But again, I think it's too important, a decision, and we can't do it anyway, to wait for the other two, so. I'd be ready for the next meeting.
And I, and the other thing to think about is, you know, obviously we're, if this passes, we go ahead with this. We need two people from the Board of Finance to step up and, and be on this thing. Since I'm inflicting this on you all, I will be one of the volunteers. Uh, since I'm on CIP anyway, maybe that makes sense. Um, but you know, we're gonna need one more, so think about that.
Yeah. Good point. Thank you, Rob. Yeah, we'll think on that and allow the other two gentlemen to, if they want, like to be part of it. All right, I guess we're going to, thank you again, Shannon, for everything and being here. We appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna move on from that and we will talk about it the next meeting. Um, we've already talked about when Cheryl was here, um, the reports. You know, we didn't move them, but we talked about it, so I'm going to move down to. Um, the next thing, which is number five on our agenda, which is new business. The education mandate relief slash legislative wrap-up. I don't know about all of you, um, and again, with members missing tonight. My initial thought was to handle just a few things, probably have a shorter meeting. Eric generally likes to comment a lot on these things. I have reviewed it. I had the packet a little bit sooner. I know I reminded Kate yesterday to send it to all of you. Um, does anyone have any specific questions they wanted to bring up about the, the legislative issues, or are you okay with waiting until Eric's here?
Yeah, I mean, I just reiterate again, one of the things that we already talked about a little bit, which is that two percent change, non-lapsing account change. Uh, frankly, it takes something off our plate. Uh, so that.
I love it. I think it's a great idea.
Things, you know, just in clarify, simplifies and clarifies. Uh, but yeah, there's quite a bit in that packet through the, the, uh, that. Sort of glossy, i- informational, uh, almost slideshow there at the end. Um, there's quite a bit in there, uh, some, some of which looks pretty good. But, uh, in terms of the impact on the town, yeah, I mean, I'd like to hear what our administrator thinks of that and, and whatnot. I don't have anything brilliant to add right at this time.
Thank you. There were a couple of things that I know he will talk to because there's been items we've talked about before, but. Like, like we've both said, he's the most knowledgeable to bring it up and bring it to our attention. Mark will too, so we might as well, in my opinion, table that or bring it up again. Next time. Is everybody okay? Just show of hands if you're okay with that. Good. Okay, thank you.
I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't an agenda item where we were gonna take action, was it?
No, I mean, it's new business that they included in the packet without a directive to me or any information, so I assume we were just gonna talk about it. He gave it to us for information.
Yeah, I think it's informational, so it's like, tabling it is even less of a big.
Well, not even tabling, but if we want to ask Eric his opinions on what, right, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll just ask him next week.
We'll ask him next time. We won't, yeah, perfect. Uh, we talked about the, we moved that. Oh, the one thing I will bring up is item C here, which Kate included in our packet, and she is hoping we can take action on this tonight. Um, it was the suspense list or basically a suspension list. I, I, maybe it's a susp- no, suspending like the taxes on this list. So she told us that it's required by state statute. And the auditors that. Uh, I, I'm just reading it briefly in front of me and then I'll paraphrase.
I'm reading it too. It looks sort of like we're sort of accepting that we're probably not gonna collect this.
Exactly, and the ones that she included were all deceased people, unfortunately. Um, it wasn't a great big amount, which I talked to Kate about. She. Uh, instilled in me the, the input or the knowledge that a lot of towns will suspend. A lot of money every year, you know, like fifty thousand or more and up, depending on how, how big the town is. So. She is asking us with the list that she included, um, that we would suspend this amount of one thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents. Um, and it made sense. She would, uh, what did she say? And she said that on this too, because I asked her a couple of questions, because we were talking about, um, just hosting and everything with a Zoom. You know, they don't suspend things that if it's a, if it's a piece of property, that's a car that's owned in two names, and there's a person that's still living and driving the car and all of those kind of things. Just something to pass on that these are simply, um, the ones like Rob said, that there's probably no hope of collecting, and it just makes it easier in her collections and her percentage. Of uncollected taxes for the town. Uh, in my opinion, Kate's doing a great job since she's came on board because she's doing new things all the time and Eric's presenting us. Different things, um, we're learning as they go, so. Again, don't want to overtalk. How does, does anyone have any, um, comments on this, opening it? Or do I have to make a motion? All right.
I'm happy to make a motion. I mean, I think it's fine. I, I'm, I'm just reading the explanation that she gave, uh, in that little email. You know, it sounds like these are the ones that are most dormant. Aren't gonna really be collectible. We, we've made an effort. And having made the effort, there's still this twelve hundred fourteen dollars and some odd cents. So. What I would say is I, I move that we approve Kate Morrissey's, now the tax collector's suggestion, uh, to suspend. Uh, the list of, I think these are all motor vehicle taxes, uh, that total one thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and two cents. For her email of June seventeenth. Hopefully that motion is specific enough.
Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kim Persson will second that, um, for the record there, and any more discussion needed on this topic? Okay, calling for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So the ayes have it, um, five zero. Um, for the motion made by Rob, so we will inform Kate, uh, send her an email that we have approved. It, um, and she can go ahead with her suspense list. So moving on, we are done with that. Um, our next item. To sti- to talk about, I don't think was in our packet.
I was gonna mention that.
Yeah, it was, I went to look at them quickly because, before the meeting, so we will, um, talk about that the next meeting. I'll let her know that she, yeah. So it was the May twenty-second regular meeting minutes, they're not included, so we will pass on that. Moving on to seven administrators report, Eric is. Hopefully enjoying himself or he is not present, so we will pass on that. He always has lots of info to talk about. Moving on to item eight, which is liaison reports. Is there anybody that's currently wrong? Moving on to item eight, which is liaison reports. Is there anybody that's currently, Rob, I know you're on the capital improvement.
Well, we didn't, uh, we didn't have a CIP meeting, uh, that was canceled, so.
Okay, and then Louise, are you on a committee? No, okay. Anyone else have anything they want to share? Brian, is there anything with the rec department? Rec commission?
Not at this time, no.
Okay, all right, we'll have to all be, I hope I can say this. We'll, we'll be tuning in to see what happens when they, I know they have to hire someone for the community and slash senior center. Uh, we'll be anxiously awaiting all of that happening. Okay, so moving on from liaison reports. Um, number nine is board open discussion. I'm just gonna state one thing, um, and it's not even anything important, so, or that we need to. I'm hoping, you know, I had a little discussion with a member today, um. You know, I think I'm gonna refrain. I I think it's better to talk about it with with the whole group, so I'm gonna gonna just end it there. It's nothing, nothing. Bad, just a suggestion I was gonna make, and I think it's better with the whole group, so since there's five, we'll wait till we have our mi- meeting. Anyone else open?
I haven't.
Okay, Kim.
I just wanted to let you guys know that I did attend the step-up ceremony and the graduation.
Oh.
It was wonderful. I was happy to be there.
Thank you.
It was great to go and represent the Board of Finance.
Thank you so much. That's great, great input. I know they're great with inviting all of us and. We try to go to as many things as possible, but that one wasn't on my agenda, but great, glad to hear it. That's always fun for the kids. Okay, we're moving on to correspondence, number ten. I don't think we have anything we're bringing forward, so we've already talked about.
Yeah, Shannon's email was really the one thing, and we talked about it. It was part of our other business, so.
Yeah, thank you, Rob.
I don't get to speak again?
We're, we're getting there.
I'll wait for the public comment.
Uh, we've had enough of you.
So number eleven, we're moving on to public speak, and as noted, Shannon, do you have anything you want to add till tonight?
The only other thing, thank you so much for letting me talk so much tonight, and I think it was really helpful for both our boards. Um, I just want to make clear, um, Cheryl had intimated that the Board of Finance might be further involved. With regard to the two percent non-lapsing account, um, and bottom line, you are no longer gonna have to be involved. So the only involvement from the Board of Finance previously, prior to the state enacting the new law. Is um that you had to approve if the Board of Ed wanted to put money into the two percent non-lapsing account. That no longer is the case, and by prior policy and state law. Um, the Board of Ed was allowed to take out whatever it needed from the two percent non-lapsing account. So bottom line, one thing off the Board of Finance's uh to-do list. Thanks very much again for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Shannon. No, we appreciate it, and thank you for clarification on that with the new. Rules and regulations that you'll just be, the Board of Ed will just be allowed to transfer it into there and, you know. Use it as they, you know, deem. Uh, so thank you for that. Um. I guess at this time, if there's no other things, um, does anyone want to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, Louise, Louise is making the motion. I just want to say it so for the minutes. Louise is making the motion to adjourn the meeting, and Rob has seconded. So at seven fifty-six PM, at least on my cell phone, um, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Looking forward to July.
Thanks all, thanks for the quick meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Have a good one.
All right, have a good one. Are we all set over there?